We would like to call to order the September 11, 2023 regular meeting of the Willoughby Eastlake City Schools Board of Education. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Tornello, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Baer.
Here.
Mr. Eady.
Here.
Mr. Rosskus.
Here.
Mrs. Schatzman.
Here.
Mrs. Mensah.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We would like to welcome everyone to our meeting this evening. To ensure all are aware of the way these meetings operate, we want to share the following. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval. Board members can discuss the items with the superintendent and treasurer. Board members are not permitted per Ohio Meeting Acts and Sunshine Laws to conduct conversations regarding board business outside of a public meeting. Tonight will be the first time the board can conduct conversations as a whole regarding the items on tonight's agenda. Board meeting agendas are always available through the district's website for public viewing prior to the board meeting. Community members can always email the board with questions or come and participate in the public comment portion of our meeting. Public comment provides an opportunity for the community to address the school board directly. In order to participate in public comments, participants would sign up before the meeting. When signing up, you are provided a copy of our public participation policy. Participants are asked to abide by those requirements. We will now move on to our agenda. Item 2A, Approval of Agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve our agenda?
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to approve item 2A, Approval of Agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second 2A, Approval of Agenda.
Discussion. Mr. Tornello.
Mrs. Baer.
Yes.
Mr. Eady.
Yes.
Mr. Rosskus.
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman.
Yes.
Mrs. Mensah.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Moving on to item 3A, Honors Presentations.
Good evening, everyone. This is the best part of my job, having the opportunity to celebrate some of our students and our staff and highlight our campuses across the district. We are a large district, and so when you have five elementaries, three middle schools, two high schools, a school of innovation, two career centers, you know, taking a moment to learn a little bit about each campus is really important. If you've ever been to Eastlake Middle School, which we're going to talk a little bit about tonight, it's a truly charming and remarkable campus. Students on that campus come from Jefferson, and some students will spend up to nine years of education on that one campus, getting to know the adults in that particular area on the north part of the district that love them dearly, and they develop a special relationship. And so tonight, we're going to hear a little bit about some of the great things going on at Eastlake Middle, and I'm going to invite Mr. Adalhofer up to highlight some students and some remarkable staff.
Thank you, Dr. Ward. So first, we're going to have Allison Fisher stand on up, okay? And I believe the entire audience is here to see Allison, correct? So, she warned me, all these people are coming today, and I joke instead, you're bringing your dog too, but that might be far off, right? So, okay. So Allison, I'm going to do my best to embarrass you here, so enjoy. Okay, it's going to be a good one here, okay. So Allison, an eighth grader at Eastlake Middle School shines brightly in both her academic achievement and her character. With a remarkable record of straight A's throughout her middle school journey, she consistently sets the bar high for her peers. What truly sets Allison apart is her incredible ambition and dedication, currently taking not one, but three high school classes while also participating in Career Exploration CCP class at Lakeland Community College, an impressive feat for any student, let alone an eighth grader. Beyond her academic excellence, Allison embodies the essence of a positive role model, serving as a PBIS ambassador within the school community. Her all-around greatness extends beyond the classroom, making her not only a standout student, but also a remarkable young individual who inspires those around her. So let's everybody give Allison a round of applause. Okay, Casey, now we have two Casys here today, but Casey Bamer, come on up, stand on up, okay? I believe mom and dad are here, so somewhere, there they are. Okay, so Casey, an eighth grade student at Eastlake Middle School is a shining example of academic excellence and creative talent. With an impressive track record of straight A's throughout her middle school years, Casey consistently demonstrates her commitment to scholastic achievement. Beyond her exceptional academics, she is a gifted writer and artist showcasing her creativeness in both written word and visual arts. Casey's passion for learning extends beyond the classroom, as she participates in Lakeland Community College's Brain Day, highlighting her curiosity and eagerness to explore various fields of knowledge. In addition to her intellectual pursuits, Casey is a two-year veteran of the Eastlake Middle School volleyball team, displaying her dedication, teamwork, and sportsmanship. Outside of school, she enjoys playing recreational soccer, further highlighting her well-roundedness and dynamic personality. Casey Bamer is undoubtedly a bright and multi-talented individual destined for continued success in all her endeavors. So, great job, Casey. Okay, so now, Dr. Ward asked me also to pick a couple of staff members, and we have a lot of great staff members at Eastlake Middle School, but two that I feel embody exactly what we are at Eastlake Middle School. First one is going to be Casey Cook, our guidance counselor. Now, anybody who knows Casey knows that she hates being the center of attention, so I'm going to make this last as long as possible, okay? Everyone is videotaping this at home, and it will be replayed for years and years to come, just so you know, okay? So Casey epitomizes the role of a caring guidance counselor. She has served the students and families of Eastlake Middle School for 26 years, okay? I'm quizzing her on that, that's good. Her dedication to her students is unwavering. Casey's genuine care and concern for each student she encounters sets her apart. She goes way above and beyond to create a welcoming and supportive environment where her students feel valued and heard. Her tireless effort extends beyond the classroom, as she consistently works hard to provide the guidance and resources necessary for her students to thrive academically and emotionally. Not only does Casey know every student at Eastlake Middle School, she spends countless hours in the summer learning, sorry, I gave that away, countless hours in the summer learning the names and backgrounds of all of her incoming students. Casey Cook's enduring presence at Eastlake Middle School is a testament to her exceptional dedication to the well-being and success of her students. So, Casey Cook, okay? I will say this with Casey, when we had our sixth grade parent, or sixth grade student orientation, you know, kids are coming in, and we're trying to get them all excited, we're high-fiving everybody as kids are coming in, and she's calling kids by name, couldn't believe it. I'm like, how do you know these kids? There's no way, you're making this up, making up names. No, she studies the pictures of the kids in the summer, so she gets to know, she doesn't want me to tell anybody, but I'm telling everybody. So then she said hi to, you know, knew the name of somebody with pink hair, and I said, okay, well, when she changes her hair color, you're not going to know, but nope, she's, oh no, I don't study hair, I know everything, so she knows it. That's right. So you get an extra reading here, so. "Willoughby Eastlake City School District's Resolution to Honor Casey Cook. Whereas guidance counselor plays, play an invaluable role in the lives of students by promoting academic, social, and emotional support, guidance counselors work tirelessly to empower students to achieve their full potential, both academically and personally. Guidance counselors serve as advocates for students, ensuring that they have access to educational opportunities and resources that will enable them to succeed." We've got about 10 more minutes, just so you know, okay? "The guidance counselors are a vital part of the educational community, collaborating with teachers, administrators, and parents to create a supportive, nurturing environment for students. Guidance counselors offer services to help students navigate the challenges and decisions they face during their educational journey. Guidance counselors assist students in developing essential life skills which help serve them throughout their years of their lives." Almost done. "Guidance counselors provide a valuable service to society by helping shape the future leaders, professionals, and citizens of our communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Willoughby Eastlake City School District hereby recognizes and honors the contributions of guidance counselors to our educational system and the positive impact they have on our students. Be further resolved, this resolution presented to Casey Cook of Eastlake Middle School as a symbol of our profound appreciation for the tireless efforts and profound impact on the lives of students and the community as a whole." Congratulations.
Thank you.
There you go. I need a timeout here, that's a lot of reading. Okay, so Scott, come on up, Scott Wyman, our plant supervisor. So, thanks for being here, Scott. I believe Scott's wife is here, she's videotaping everything right now, so, okay. Scott's just like Casey, the last thing he wants is this attention in front of everybody, so that's why I picked him, so we're going to go through this as well. So, Scott is an invaluable member of the staff at Eastlake Middle School. As the head custodian, he consistently goes above and beyond to ensure a smooth operation of the school building. His tireless dedication is evident year-round, as he meticulously maintains the facilities and handles any maintenance challenges that arise. What truly, what truly sets Scott apart is his remarkable flexibility and willingness to lend a hand whenever it's needed. He's not just a supervisor, he's a caring presence within the school community. Scott prioritizes the well-being of both staff and students, always ready to offer assistance and support. It's common to see him helping students with their lockers or picking up drop books, a testament to his commitment to creating a safe and welcoming environment for everyone at Eastlake Middle School. Congratulations, Scott. What I'll add about Scott is Scott's first thing he says to me every day is, what can I do to help you? It's never about him, it's always what he can do to help not just me, but everybody in the building, and I know Casey would agree with that, and the students agree as well. He's just a great person to have on staff. I actually ran into somebody today who, we did a police training this summer, which if you know anything about the schools in the summer, the custodians have a very limited amount of time to try to get the buildings clean, and it takes a long time, and teachers have a whole list of demands, things they want moved here and there, and they've got to scrub the floors, clean the walls, and everything else, and on top of little things I want him to do. But we had an entire police force on the second floor, I mean, police officers all the way from Eastlake, all of Lake County, we had police officers from California come out for some extra training on just evacuating schools and school safety, and it was no problem with Scott at all, and they were just complimenting me today that we allowed this, because I saw one of the officers today, just because most buildings will only let them have one room, and we gave them an entire floor. So it was a big compliment to you, Scott, so thank you. So, all right, I've got a lot to read for you as well, so here we go. So, "Willoughby Eastlake City School District's Resolution to Honor Scott Wyman. Whereas plant supervisors are the unsung heroes of our facilities, working diligently behind the scenes to ensure the cleanliness, safety, and functionality of our environment. Whereas plant supervisors have demonstrated unwavering dedication and commitment to maintaining our premises to the highest standard of consistency, and they go above and beyond their duties. Plant supervisors demonstrate a positive attitude and strong work ethic, serving as an example of professionalism and dedication to their colleagues and peers. Plant supervisors have shown exceptional teamwork, collaboration, and adaptability in fulfilling their responsibilities, often working tirelessly to meet the changing, changing needs of the organization. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Willoughby Eastlake City School District acknowledges and honors the outstanding contributions of plant supervisors to our organizations and community. Be it further resolved that this resolution is presented to Scott Wyman of Eastlake Middle School as a symbol of our appreciation of his tireless effort, as a profound impact for our school district, and the lives of staff, students, and community as a whole." Congratulations, Scott.
Moving on to item 4A, Community Engagement, Public Comment. Mr. Tornello, do we have any public comment this evening?
We do not.
Thank you. Moving on to 5A, Board Discussion. Does anyone have anything they would like to add to this line item? Okay, then.
Yes, I think Dr. Ward will hit on this a little bit later, but we did have a meeting a couple weeks ago with Andrew Mangels. He's a former member of the Citizens Advisory Committee in Westlake, and he provided a lot of helpful information on how to structure the committee and how to maintain interest among the committee members, and also how to, very helpful hints on how to choose topics and other, a lot of great wisdom as far as keeping the committee going in a positive direction in the long, for long term. That's all I have.
Thank you. Moving on to 5B, Mrs. Schatzman, can you please provide the legislative update?
Sure. So, actually, this week, our legislature is coming back to start off with some committee meetings, and then the Senate will meet again a little bit later this week. So I should have some more updates for you guys, finally. I will say, if you want to tune into anything on the Ohio Channel tomorrow, we've got both the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee has their first committee meeting in several months, and then also the House Ways and Means Committee, where specifically we'll be tracking HB 187, which has to deal with potential restructuring of the way property taxes are collected and assessed. So we'll be paying close attention to that. I also wanted to let you guys know that Governor Dewine actually formed an Ohio Bus Safety Committee, Commission, and he formed that unfortunately a result, as a result of a tragedy which resulted in a fatality in another part of Ohio. So Governor Dewine was actually in Lake County, visiting one of our neighboring schools, and we will hear more updates as they assess bus safety and look into ways that we can ensure all of our children are safe going to school every day. So I will keep you guys posted, and then the State Board of Education will resume their meetings next week. You should have all received an FYI message from me, and for everyone out there, the survey to give your input on what are the essential characteristics of the new Ohio State Superintendent of Public Instruction is open until 8:00 AM tomorrow morning. You can find that, as well as the job description and the search timeline, on the state school board's website, which you can find by Googling, or it's under, I believe, education.ohio.gov/stateschoolboard, but probably easier to just search. So that is my quick update, and you all can let me know if you have any questions going forward, but I'll keep you updated as there are new developments playing out in the legislature that impact us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to 6, Superintendent Announcements. Dr. Ward.
Thanks. I'm going to put my glasses on, this is a new edition recently, now I can see. Under item A, the opening of school, we had an absolutely electric opening of school on August 19. We gathered all of our faculty at North High School, and we heard from parents, we heard from students, we heard from teachers about some of the great things going on in Willoughby Eastlake, and why this district was their choice. The whole hour was filled with the band, we heard students perform some of the drama acts. It really was a wonderful way to open the school year. In addition to that, I've had a chance to visit every single campus multiple times over the last four weeks, and I can say without, you know, hesitating, that there are some amazing things happening across Willoughby Eastlake. In addition to that, we had South High School had their homecoming last week, always an exciting time to remember the history and to come home, and then North High School will have their homecoming coming up September 23. And then lastly, the North-South football game is October 6, which is before the next board meeting, so it's also something that I want to make sure we put out there. Last month, we had a question about vouchers and enrollment in the district, and I think it's an important topic that we are paying attention to at this level, monthly in our cabinet meetings. This idea that we check in and see the total enrollment for the district and compare it to see, are there any trends emerging and patterns that we should be paying attention to. What we see right now is that in spring of '23, so at the end of last school year, we had about 6,984 students attending Willoughby Eastlake schools, and beginning in fall of '23, we're at about 7,190, which is about 206 additional students at the beginning of this school year. And so we're going to keep a close eye on that policy. We're continuing to be very diligent in telling our story to the community about the great opportunities we have for students here in Willoughby Eastlake, and we're going to continue to be proactive around that particular topic and pay attention to that policy as it evolves. For item B, the coffee talks, we make, we have a lot of coffee, so I would highly encourage people to come out. Now, I can't drink coffee in the evening myself, because I'm already pretty animated, but we do, we do enjoy the opportunity to talk to people in a small intimate setting, and we've been doing that again next Wednesday, we'll be at Longfellow, this will be our fourth. We have a small intimate group that typically shows up, it's been different people each time, and we'll continue to explore what, again, what people are proud of in Willoughby Eastlake, challenges and obstacles that the district's going to face in the future, and then most importantly, how we put a plan together to prepare our students for the 21st century and their future. And so we're going to continue to have those conversations. We're going to be at Eastlake Middle School in Jefferson on the 20th, then there's about a week or two off, but then we'll hit it again in October with Soy, Grant, Willoughby Middle School. We added some senior centers that we're going to be visiting during the day, as well as some of our public libraries. Again, we're just going to continue to expand access and opportunity for people to come out and talk about their schools, what's on their hearts and minds, so again, we can continue to listen and learn moving forward. For item C, the, our 100-day entry plan and engagement plan, so again, the first 100 days, we're committed to building structures so that we can have ongoing conversations with our community beyond November, which will be the 100th day. We're going to begin our Parent Superintendent Advisory Committee. Next week, we'll meet with that group. Those invitations are going out. Again, it's an opportunity for me to connect with some of our parents who are involved in some of our booster groups across the district and some of our organizations, and hear from them in a regular fashion. The Community Advisory Committee, we did meet with someone from Westlake who's been part of a similar committee. We're planning on launching our version on October 23, where we're going to empower our community to have a voice and be engaged in impacting our education for our students positively. And then lastly, we have a Student Superintendent Advisory Committee that I put together. Personally, it's my favorite. I get to meet and eat pizza with students and hear what's on their hearts and minds, to talk about how we make sure their school is preparing them for their future, and that they have a vehicle to share what's on their hearts as well. And then lastly, across the district today, we celebrated Patriot's Day. We had on every campus across the district, students engaged in some program where they had an opportunity to thank our police, our fire, and our EMS, as well as remember those that lost their lives on this day in September of 2001. I also was invited today in a special way to participate in Eastlake's ceremony. Our band, the North High School Band, performed there today. We should be very proud of how our students represented the district today on this very solemn and important day. And I believe that is it.
Thank you. Moving on to item 7A, Approval of Minutes of August 14, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve 7A?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve 7A, Minutes of August 14, 2023.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second item 7A.
Discussion. Mr. Tornello.
Mrs. Baer.
Yes.
Mr. Eady.
Yes.
Mr. Rosskus.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero?
Item seven B, do I hear a motion to approve minutes of August 21st, 2023?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve item seven B, approval of minutes of August 21st.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second seven B, approval of minutes of August 21st, 2023.
Discussion? Mr. Tarnello?
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Eady?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero?
Item eight, Treasurers' Report, Mr. Tarnello?
Thank you. Eight A, Financial Report for the month ended August 31st, 2023. Our cash balance is sitting at $3.45 million more than estimated due to revenues, exceeding estimates by 1.5 million, and expenditures coming under budget by 2 million. The revenues exceeded the estimate as a result of the property tax collection coming in about $900,000 more than anticipated, and receiving more interest on our investments. We have also already received 44% of what we thought we would receive in interest for the year. Through two months, we will begin to see less, month over month, as a result of receiving most of our cash until our next tax collection in February. However, we will continue to maximize the investment earning opportunities as they arise. Our expenditures are underestimated primarily due to staff salaries, benefits, and purchase services. We will have a better idea as to where the FY24 staff numbers are after the September, after September, when the next contract begins for all of our staff groups. The purchase service line is below estimated as a result of timing. Most of these services occur when the, when schools in session, and we will not begin receiving invoices until later in September or October for payment. Eight B, Athletic Event Workers' Pay Schedule. The sections highlighted in yellow are the ones that have been adjusted, these were passed along to us by the conference. Eight C, Grant Application Acceptance. This is the Vail Foundation for NCI Willby. These funds are used for business students. In the past, we have purchased things such as Think Fest, field trips, the DECA competition, Cav's Career Day, and supplies for that group. Eight D, Purchase Orders. These are, were invoices from, that were received. The timing was different between the invoices and the purchase order date, these usually occur every month, however, we did have a few more this month, we did have some from, you could see ESY Tuition, Summer School, some of those things that occurred in May and June of 2023, and that was last fiscal year, but were invoiced this year. As a result, we had to create a new purchase order, and they became then in-house. Eight E, Student Activity Accounts. They must establish a budget and purpose and goals for all activities in fiscal '24, and funds cannot be spent by an activity account if they are not budgeted for and/or does not agree with the budget, purpose, and goals of the group. So you could see, we had a couple new budgets and one revision listed. And lastly, we have a donation from the Willby South Band Boosters, they donated $1,800 for the marching band transportation to Cedar Point.
Thank you. Dr. Ward?
All right, Superintendent, Resolution nine A, Ohio Student Wellness and Success Funding Plan. This is a plan that must be shared at the board meeting within 30 days of creation, and it's aligned to House Bill 33, which is a new requirement for school districts. For Willby Eastlake, we are using this particular set of funds to support our guidance counselors and our SROs.
Do I hear a motion to approve item nine A, Ohio Student Wellness and Success Funding Plan?
Madam President, I move to approve nine A, Ohio Student Wellness and Success Funding Plan.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second item number, I just need a nine A. Thank you.
Discussion?
I just wanted to point out, and I did clarify this in advance of the meeting, that this is not additional funding that we're receiving. I, I know we talked a lot in the budget about, you know, what was included, what wasn't, there was talk at one point of having special funds allocated for things like SROs, but this is just part of the, you know, the fair school funding roll-in that we're getting, so this is resources that we are required to report on how we're using them, but it's not an additional subset of funding that we're receiving for these things, although I am glad that we're using it for our safety.
I did have just two quick questions, just real simple ones. So when we look through the document on page six, we have the mid-year progress, mid-year plan modifications, do we know when that would be updated and presented to the board for progress?
Yeah, so the, oops. So the timeline, and that will be probably second semester in January, will be a good place to stop and pause.
And I know you and I spoke previously with my question about follow-up, and I love that there's a progress measures section for family engagement satisfaction surveys. Would love to know and get feedback on, from our students, on our staff, and our families, on how we're delivering on these measures.
Any more discussion? Mr. Tarnello?
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Eady?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero?
All right, for item nine B, this would be special transfer, transportation for students with special needs that require additional transportation outside of the scope that Peterman can provide. For item nine C, this is a agreement to enter in to, with Western Governors University, so that they can provide us with student teachers and interns for teaching practicums. And so we're always looking to extend an opportunity for students to come into our school and learn how to be teachers for some of the best. Item nine D would be formal approval of the transportation bus stops. This is a yearly approval of all bus stops in Willby Eastlake. And then item nine E would be an amendment to the Parent Guardian Transportation Agreement we approved last month.
Thank you, you can keep going with the personnel agenda.
I'll get this slowed down eventually. Ten A would be administrative personnel, and Mr. Tarnello?
Thank you. I would like to thank Donna Crooks for her 20 years of service to Willby Eastlake, most of which were as the Assistant Treasurer, but she has helped the district through, you know, whether it be complete accounting system over, overhauls, or redesigns, or countless new software programs that, some of them were from me. But I just wanna appreciate, because she's been, you know, a rock in that office, you know, there's a lot of rocks in that office, they've all been there a long time, I couldn't imagine doing this job without them, but I wanted to take this time to thank Donna for her 20 years of service to the district. And then I'd also like to highlight Michelle Peters, as I would like to make the recommendation to move her to Assistant Treasurer, as she has been the Administrative Assistant to the Treasurer for the last three years, and she has done so much more than just be the Admin Assistant to the Treasurer. She has handled a software that was purchased in March of 2020, now she started in like October of 2020, and she was told to get it off the ground, and she did that in a couple months, and all, also, we listened, and she implemented and integrated Amazon at the same time. So she did things that our predecessors did not, or were not able to do, and, you know, kudos to her for just diving in and being able to do that. And she also implemented a transition to work program for injured workers within the district that can assist with them to get back to work a little bit sooner, and that was something that we did not have in the district prior to Michelle taking over. So these accomplishments and more are why I am recommending that Michelle become the next Assistant Treasurer for the Willby Eastlake City Schools.
Thank you.
All right, for item ten B, this is Certified Personnel, you'll see under there an appointment of a teacher, some tutors, substitutes, resignations, and leave. Item ten C, for the Classified Personnel, I do wanna call attention to the list of food service appointments in there. The ability to feed our students and make sure that we've got people that are willing to get out there and do that work is really important, and you'll see a pretty good list listed there, as well as our lead monitors, our student monitors, our breakfast monitors, our substitutes, these are really critical roles for the smooth operation of a school district, and you'll see those listed there. And then lastly, you'll see under ten D, supplemental contracts, which would be those contracts in addition to the regular contract, to support a wide range of things from co-curricular to extracurricular supervision and a vast number of needs.
Thank you. Moving on to item 11A, meeting notification. The next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 9th, 2023, 7:00 PM at the Administration Building, 35353 Curtis Boulevard in Eastlake, Ohio. Moving on to 12A, Consent Calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve item 12A, Adoption of Consent Calendar?
Madam President, I will make a motion to approve item 12A, Adoption of Consent Calendar.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second Consent Calendar, 12A Adoption of Consent Calendar.
Discussion? Mr. Tarnello?
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Eady?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero?
Moving on to item 13A, Adjourn to Executive Session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn to executive session? There will be two separate executive sessions, one for negotiations and one for appointment and/or employment of a PlaBok employee.
Madam President, I make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I second item 13A.
Discussion? Mr. Tarnello?
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Eady?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
During executive session is of 7:34 PM.
We will take no action after the executive session.